Mayor Butler, we're going live, sir.
2022 Burlington City Council Meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting has been held via Zoom platform and will be livestreamed on City Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. Please note this meeting is being recorded. For tonight's public comments and to address council with this meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature and Zoom or if by phone, press star nine and our meeting host will notify us that you wish to speak. As a side note, we do have four public hearings and open public comments, so we are operating under a hybrid model tonight, which is a little different for council and staff alike, so we may call staff for additions of assistance if we need it to be efficient and polite with everything. In addition to public comments, we've got a podium to my left and rear will help escort everyone to those if they're speaking to us live. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Jim Butler and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on agenda are present and can hear supporting. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Proton Harold, here. Councilmember Cathy Hines. Councilmember Bob Ward, here. Councilmember Ronnie Wall, here. Participants and presenters, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative as well. City Manager Harden Watkins, here. City Attorney David Huffman, here. Interim City Clerk Michelle Parker Evans.
Here.
Recreation and Parks Director Tony Lawson.
Here.
Director of Human Resources Jamie Jordan. Jamie Williams.
Ms. Joyner is coming in and she had the invite late.
Okay. Just let us know when she's here. Police Chief Brian Long, here. Transportation Engineer and Operations Manager Brian Tennant.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman, here. Interim Assistant City Manager Cheryl Brown.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager Morgan Lassner.
Here.
And Director of Human Resources Jamie Joyner. Jamie, are you with us? She's still coming?
She's coming in right now, sir.
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you, your patience with that. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's implication.
Pray with me. Loving heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered together. Bless each person present. We pray for guidance in matters in hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work in the spirit of joy and enthusiasm. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. Lord, we give you the glory for what we accomplish. We ask this in your name. Amen.
At this time, we have a special presentation of the 2021 Health Partnership Award. I'd like to recognize Almanx County's Public Health Director Toni Legudigen. Did I get that right? You guys are welcome to come to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. My name is Mary Lena, Moryna Mercia, and I serve as chair for the Board of Health. And Toni Legudigen, Department of Defense, our health department director. It's an honor for us to be able to be here today. Each year, the Health Department, the Board of Health, gets together a group of individuals and we recognize four awards and one of them is the Community Partner and a bit of something similar.
So Mayor Butler, Mayor Proton Owen, and councilmembers, thank you for having us this evening to come report. And before I read the merits of the award, I want to kind of reflect on a year ago. Almost a year ago, I received a call from Mr. Watkins saying, "What do you need? How many do you need? Where do you need them?" Where did they report to? "For your service," he said. That was a call from a head of state and we were just overwhelmed. To get that call was wonderful, the amount of resources and sure enough, my request that day, top of the police department, fire department that we already had outside. We had many City of Burlington employees descended on the vaccination sites, which was so helpful. And these folks came zero five hundred in the morning, sometimes even earlier, their sleeves rolled up, ready to go to work. And it's like they knew what to do for day one. We didn't have to give any direction. It was just phenomenal, awesome, and they integrated the team well. You're about to hear all that here inside the board. Public Health Services include monitoring population health, community needs, and assets, as well as responding to health hazards. Since the onset of the pandemic, the City of Burlington realized that Almanx County Health Department resources were finite. A community approach was needed to address the COVID-19 response and mitigation strategy. Over the past year, the City of Burlington has supported the Health Department's COVID-19 response and mitigation effort by providing staff, volunteers, from its police, fire, parks, public information, city management, and various other departments. These staff members worked tirelessly alongside Health Department personnel to deliver food and medical items to those sick with COVID, as well as carry out a mass vaccination plan. The staff and volunteers worked in freezing temperatures, rain, snow, ice, and the conditions for safety had to be closely monitored. As with any emergency response and incident commands, in this case, Unified Command was established for mass vaccination plans. Unified Command is responsible for overall management of the incident. Members of the Unified Command worked together to develop a common set of incident objectives and strategies, share information, maximize the use of available resources, and enhance the efficiency of individual response organizations. The City's Police Department represented to establish a unified command with Public Health Department. Within the command structure, Burlington's Public Information Department helped establish a joint information system to help with media messaging. The Fire Department assisted with vaccination operation, Police Department, and other departmental staff assisted in traffic safety, administrative efforts, and customer service objectives. Additionally, the City assisted with vaccine planning, site selection, IT infrastructure, site security, and site maintenance. Assistance from the City of Burlington Health, the Almanx County Health Department, with its measures of shots in arms, safety, and efficiency, with continuous collaboration to date, towards sixty-five thousand shots that have been safely placed in arms and ten thousand meals, groceries, and supplies delivered to those in isolation airports. On behalf of the Board of Health and the men and women at the Health Department, it is my honor to announce the City of Burlington is the winner of the 2021 Public Health Partnership Award.
Healthless were called yesterday. They were reaching out to every municipality in the county wishing for. And the officials in public health have fairly roomed forecasts in terms of the numbers where we are now and where they might be within the next two to three weeks. What do you guys see?
So we're seeing obviously cases increasing due much like the state of Ohio. Now it's down here, you expect a peak to happen with this, especially this barrier. Expect that peak to likely occur next week. It is a highly infectious barrier, but it's highly infectious, but it is not causing the severe illness that we see with the Delta variant, right? But it's still, COVID-19 still poses dangers to those that are high risk, to sickness and illness. And we got great prevention tools such as the vaccine, other strategies focused to, again, keep people out of the hospitals from severe illness. Ninety to fourteen, that's predicted right now. What's our rate? Our rate of vaccination? Yeah, so I'm gonna shoot for the tip here. So we take into account to total population, I believe, completely vaccinated, live vaccinated, so that's the entire series there. We're just over fifty percent, so about ninety-two percent.
That fully vaccinated includes a shot in the nose too.
Thank you so much for being with us. I do want to add to that, we have pleasure receiving this award tonight, but it's city staff that made that happen. Our leadership team, thanks to Harden and the entire city staff who were pitching in and determined that was used during this presentation was the assistance. And that's what our city's, the representative in the form of the city said that would have happened. Our next item is the approval of minutes that should be included in your package of the December sixth, twenty twenty-one work session and December seventh, twenty twenty-one City Council meeting. Need a motion to approve. So move it there. Got a motion by Councilmember Ward, second. Second by Mayor for Jim Harold, all in favor, signify by aye. This time, I'll call Interim City Clerk Michelle Parker Evans to read the code of ethics and conflict of interest.
Members of the council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Next, we have several additions that have been requested to be added to the consent agenda. There, we need a motion for those out.
Make a motion, we are.
Got a motion by Mayor Proton Harold and a second by Councilmember Wall. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye, can you oppose? Next, we need the adoption of the agenda with the add-on, if you're motion.
We'll be adopting the agenda with these issues.
Have a motion by Councilmember Hines and a second by Councilmember Ward. All in favor, signify by aye. Can you oppose? Next to the consent agenda items, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A is, are actually A through F, is to defer city councils' public hearing in consideration of the applicant's contention for annexation for A zero Melrose Drive, one twenty-seven oh sixty-two. Item B, zero Melrose Drive, PID one twenty-seven oh sixty-six. Item C, zero Pollard Avenue, PID one seven oh three seven one. Item D, zero Pollard Avenue, PID one seven oh three seven two. Item E, twenty-two eighteen North Highway NC sixty-two, PID one four oh six oh one. Item F, eleven sixty-two Sandy Cross Road, PID one forty-nine nine eighteen. These will be to a future time, verse one to Norcaline Junction, section one sixty-three dash two oh two, Burlington City Code, section forty, point forty, and terms of the annexation agreement executed by the application of the city file of the Almanx County Register of Deeds. And a more detailed description of those will be spelled out in the agenda here as well for your review. Moving on to item G is to amend the City of Burlington's traffic ordinance to convert an existing parking space in South Spring Street to a loading zone. Item A is to approve the B-Mon Tribe Regional Council, PTRC, salary recommendations for sworn police officers and fellow communicators. And item I to adopt a policy for allowable costs and cost principles for the expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds awards. Is there a motion? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, I have a motion by Mayor for a two, Owen, and a second by Councilmember Wall, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you oppose? Okay, tonight, we have several public hearings and I think we're probably going to have some Zoom presenters and we'll have some live. So we'll each one of these as well. Item, item one, public hearing has been set to consider an application to resell a property zone conditional industrial CI seven ninety-one to light industrial LI. Property in question is located at fourteen fifty-three Industry Drive, easterly from the Tucker Street and Industry Drive intersection and consists of Almanx County Tax Identification Number one twenty-two four thirty-seven. This time, council will recognize Director Planning Transportation, Mike Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor. Not like those. Have you presented something here? This is an item two, rubber, request to reselling the property, seven point three one acres, seven point three one acres for a conditional industrial, CI seven nine one, to light industrial. The property is located. You can see this is the property off of Industry Drive. The current zoning is CI. The request is to resell it to light industrial. The future land use map has this property known as, not known, but is the cause for the area to be general industrial. Staff finds that the proposed zoning is consistent with the land use plan and is compatible with the existing industrial uses in the area and is recommending approval on option one, shown in bold and red in your consistency statement sheets. After November twenty-second meetings of the zoning commission recommended approval request, staff also presented this request at your December sixth conference session meeting. Today, staff had to be doing far as in public. Staff and the applicant, Mr. Chris Curry, is on the phone call, are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any, any questions from council concerning this item? And everyone should have received a brief summary from P and Z in your package that's left. So any comments, questions from that? Does attorney want to speak or do we have a seat on there?
Yes, sir. I'm at home, I'm moving on, trying to stop putting me there in person. I'm here to answer questions if you guys have any.
Okay. I think you said he was there for questions and many. So at this time, we will open the floor for comments and public hearing. Since this is a hybrid with Zoom being our primary methodology, I'll ask, Madam Clerk, have we received any written public comments regarding subject matter in this situation in the period between publication of the required notice and the twenty-four hours prior to this meeting? First one to NCGS one sixty-six eight dash nineteen point two four E.
Where is the public comment?
Thank you. Are there any public comments from the floor or any via the Zoom platform?
No request for comment at this time, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a motion from Councilmember Wall, those public hearings, your second. Second, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you oppose? Okay, the sheets have been provided to everyone for a motion. Is there a motion that counts?
Yeah, I don't have a motion. I have a motion, I feel the request is done. Done for CI seven ninety-one to light industrial. And I have a proxy question located at fourteen fifty-three Industry Drive, easterly from Tucker Street and Industry Drive intersection and consists of Almanx County Tax Identification Number one two two four thirty-seven. Motion based on the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have inducted use. Request is compatible with this Jason and Doug refuse. That is reasonable and in the public interest and that the comprehensive plan calls inducted use of the area and the request is compatible with the existing land use of the area.
Thank you, Mr. Second. Second by Councilmember Wall, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you oppose? Thank you. Item number two. Thank you, Ernie, for being with us. Thank you so much. Item number two, a public hearing has been set to consider an application to amend an existing conditional business CBA thirty-six son of a property to allow for office, medical, and pharmacy uses and to eliminate prior square footage limitations of safe uses within the existing building. The property in question is located at three seventy-eight Harden Street, easterly from the Harden Street and Maple Avenue intersection and consists of Almanx County Tax Identification Number one thirty-three one forty-two. At this time, we're at, next Conrad wants to get us.
Yes, sir. Evening, Mayor. Members of council, sign us the request, an existing an existing conditional business property of CBA thirty-six, some property approximately one point five one acres in size, to continue the uses for office, medical, and pharmacy and to eliminate prior square footage limitations of uses within the existing building. The applicant has advised that the operator Chen Nett will be operating a senior medical center at his location from seven thirty a.m. to five p.m. Monday through Friday. The comprehensive plan calls for the area to be regional commercial. The proposed use amendment is consistent with the land use plan and is compatible with existing commercial uses in the area. Staff recommends approval of consistency statement sheet, option one, shown in bold and in red. After November twenty-second meeting, the zoning commission recommended approval of this project. Staff also presented this request at the December sixth, two thousand twenty-one City Council Work Session meeting. The date of step, then receiving inquiry from the public and entered accordingly. The applicant, Mr. Fred Longus, is available to answer any questions, well said.
Okay. Any questions from council or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, happy new year to each of you.
Happy new year.
I'll try to be very gree, be in order of my fee. He spoke very well about what we're about. It really boils down to having an amendment to the conditional business use zoning to allow for medical practice to be there. Our client anticipates using this facility to its fullest extent. The idea is to focus on the community needs for senior citizen care. It's intended that this facility will be a full service facility for seniors. It will allow for diagnostic work, for clinical work, for testing, including laboratory testings, et cetera, so that the senior citizens will not have to keep coming back to the facility over time and hopefully would be basically a one-stop visit. And the purpose of that is, of course, to have a zoning change so that the use can be used in this facility. And the current use, it was limited to pharmacy. Basically, some amendments to allow for the medical facility to be used. There'll be no change in the footprint or size of building. There's no anticipated change of exit and entrance to the building. And as you can see, looking at the map, we believe it's compatible with zoning properties. There are some residential properties to the east, but those properties are all some neighborhood business. To, directly to the west of certain property is a self-storage facility that's by the launch. And if familiar with the area, near the intersection of Maple Avenue, we have all different types of businesses, including the shopping center, they even have an industrial zoning in that area. But we believe that our request is reasonable, it's compatible with this area, and we appreciate the city staff reaching that same conclusion as they were due to improve access to the program.
Thank you. See, want to have any questions for Conrad or for Mr. Longus?
Conrad, help me illuminate our spiritual position and expectations of said use. Can you go with me a bit about that in terms of, if that's the?
Correct, so the, you can see right here, the current conditions have a total of seven hundred, it's kind of hard to read there, seventeen thirty square feet of building. The use of pharmacy and use is in the B one zoning, this is zoning ordinance pre-DO, pre-3500 square foot. So the, the current user would like, would like to remove these restrictions and square footage. People take that building's about ten thousand square foot in size, so you're looking at them being able to allocate how they best see fit what uses and they want to allocate within the building itself. So that's really where that elimination of the square footage comes into play here.
You said something to the music, fair or common, or not?
In my experience, it's not very common to restrict a building's allocated uses by type within the building. So this
So this, the view that we're going on seems to be the best practice.
Thank you. Any other questions? This time we'll, uh, open the floor for public, uh, comment period to the public hearing. Uh, Madam Clerk, have we received any of the written public comments regarding this subject matter in the period between publication of the required notice and twenty four hours prior to this meeting pursuant to Northland General Statute one sixty six A dash nineteen point twenty four E?
No comments.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, public comments from the floor or any via the Zoom platform? Scott, any that you see?
My apologies. No, sir. No, no, uh, request for comment.
Motion to close public hearing in a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Can you post? In motion for the other questions?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve your request to amend an existing conditional business CBA thirty six zone property to allow for office, medical, pharmacy uses and to eliminate prior square footage limitations of safe uses within the existing building. The property in question is located at three seventy eighth Hardin Street, easterly from the Hardin Street and Maple Avenue intersection, consists of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number one, three, three, one, four, two. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed zoning with the comprehensive plan in that future land, the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have residential and commercial uses. The request is compatible with adjacent residential, commercial, and industrial uses. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. And the request is compatible with existence of land uses.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Clinton Carroll, though, and I expect them by Councilmember Ronnie Wong. All in favor, signify by aye. Can you post? Thank you, Mr. Walton. I can give you. Next item number three. A public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone a property some medium density residential, M D R, and general business G B to the general business G B. The property in question is located sixteen twenty South Turst Street, southeast from the intersection of South and Neil Street and South Turst Street and consists of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number one twenty one, six eighty three. At this time, we'll raise, ask Conrad.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is my request for rezoning of a property approximately point five, six acres in size from medium density residential and general business to a general business zone district. Apparently, the front portion of the spot is own general business. And the rear portion of this lot is own M D Rs. It would be considered a split zone property. The applicant would like to rezon the entire property to the general business zoning district. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be pardon me, traditional residential, typically located near retail and public uses and parks. This rezoning site is also on the edge of the mixed use area at the intersection of Church and Neil Streets. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use plan and that its location is compatible with existing office and commercial uses adjacent to the site. Staff recommends approval with consistency statement sheet option one, shown in bold and red. After November twenty second meeting, the planning zoning commission recommended approval of this project. Staff also presented this request at your December sixth work session meeting. Today, staff did receive an inquiry, uh, one comment in opposition, that was forty two. And the applicant, Mr. Miss Goldman, are here to answer any questions you may have as well as staff.
Any questions for Conrad? Conrad, I do have one question. We had a, uh, very similar, uh, rezoning with West and that area. What was that?
Right. So this map here, recently, council approved. I'm going to zoom in very closely, pardon me. In this area right here, Z dash two, one, dash, one, zero. Council did approve a rezoned request to make that all general business.
Conrad, did you say there was opposition?
There was one received calling an email from, uh, from a property that I was notified in opposition of the request.
See, uh, the petitioner, uh, Mr. Max Focus, but this is dark pen. Didn't see you guys welcome with any, any, I know most everybody knows Max from many years in at that location. Uh, state that you guys want to make.
Please, do you want to say anything or make any statements? You have any questions or anything?
No, not unless you're permitted, uh, it's, uh, I'll make the, uh, D is one D and, uh, I never tried to get it commercial at the back, but the front is a court, commercial. But I'd like to get that done if there's possibility.
Okay, any questions for council? This is public hearing, but this time we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, have we received any of the written public comments regarding the subject matter in the period between publication of the required notice and the twenty four hour period prior to this meeting pursuant to Northland General Statute one sixty six A dash nineteen point two four E?
No comments.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, public comments from the floor? Scott, if you'll check this on Zoom platform, please.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have no requests for comments, sir.
Motion.
Uh, Mayor, I make a motion, uh, to approve your request to close public hearing.
So we got a motion in a second to, uh, close the public hearing, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you post? And is there a motion for the, uh, request?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this question of the zoning property. Zone medium density residential, M D R, general business G B. Property in question is located at sixteen twenty South Turst Street, southeast from the intersection of South of Neil Street and South Turst Street, consists of Almanzt County Tax Identification Number one, two, one, six, eight, three. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls this area to have residential and commercial uses. The request is compatible with adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the areas and the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
I have a motion by Mayor Clinton, your votes are second. Second by Councilmember Ward, all in favor, signify by aye. Can you post? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item, item four on the agenda. Public hearing has been set to consider a series of text amendments to the City of Burlington's Unified Felt Number, sorry, U D O. This is the sixth round of text amendments. Sixth U D O was adopted by City Council on July sixteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen. At this time, I will recognize.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a chat, maybe we can present chat. Probably the chat, no, it's, it's. It's, and it's very good to be back. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, I'm Chad Metz, principal, uh, with the parish members, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about U D O T A one twenty two. This is our sixth text amendment since U D O adoption about two and a half years ago. So we've done pretty well, uh, with the number of amendments necessary. Uh, I wanted to mention very briefly the purpose for the U D O text amendments uh, and summarize the main aspects of U D O T A one twenty two for you. We'll get it with the technology, I'll tell you. So there's three basic reasons why we need the text amendments. Uh, mostly to support community prosperity, to address changes legal requirements, and to increase clarity in the language. So. Here's an example of some of the text amendments that we've made over the past, uh, two and a half years that really foster community prosperity. Essentially, city staff works, works with applicants to ensure their needs can be met while staying within the letter of the law. Most of the time, this can be done without amendment, but sometimes amendments are needed. Uh, some like those done for maybe redevelopment in downtown, so it takes new residential developments. Or, uh, the density rounding that allows us to incorporate greater yields on lots with existing infrastructure. Uh, and some of the signage changes that we've proposed over the years to, to further facilitate commerce. We've also had some changes, um, to accommodate state or federal law. Um, when state or federal law changes, we are obliged to follow suit. So one sixty D, uh, the rerouted planning enabling statute we did, uh, a few months back is a good example of those kinds of changes. So, tonight before you, one sixty D, one, uh, not one sixty D, but U D O T A one twenty two. There's about thirty areas of revision. Um, and they're, they're in response to, you know, supporting community prosperity and increasing precision and maintaining compliance with state federal law. I am, uh, I'm not going to go over all thirty range of, uh, topics, which you, uh, I know you guys are very busy people. I'll, I will just, um, cover some of the highlights for you. Uh, and be here to answer any questions if you have some. Uh, limited use districts, uh, the inclusion of new limited use districts is one of the, 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 the primary aspects of U D O T A one twenty two. Essentially, uh, we've created another conditional zoning option uh, that's limited to conditions where an applicant is seeking to prohibit, uh, one or more uses that are otherwise allowed. It's basically a simpler option for conditional rezoning here in Burlington. We were hearing from applicants who needed some flexibility, didn't want to go to the, the, the extreme of the plan development process and the conditional zoning process wasn't quite a good fit for them. So staff has worked with applicants and we've come up with this idea of the limited use zoning districts incorporated in U D O one twenty two. Hopefully to make it easier for applicants to propose a zoning district for a particular use without having to have a lot of other extraneous conditions or other sorts of discussion or debate among, uh, among the staff or with the neighbors. So that was one of the many important aspects of, of this set of amendments. Another, uh, manufacturing and mobile home parks standards, clarifying the standards for manufactured home parks and making, making sure that existing mobile and manufactured home parks in the city uh, are, are able to continue to operate in cases where one or more units might be moved out. Which obviously in the midst of a housing crisis, we know that these kinds of, of use types are very important to, to housing the population. And we wanted to just make sure that folks weren't losing that housing option uh, as possibly based on the standards. So we tried to ease those kinds of provisions that would have stopped or prevented reestablishment of a, of a manufacturer of mobile homes inside a space in one of these parks. Finally, I'll mention the signage changes, particularly the ability for open air uses to have signage. You may recall that one of the changes in, uh, U D O T A one twenty two were some standards that require principal structures to be located on sites before certain kinds of signs could be allowed. We had a discussion about this in December of last year uh, and have made some adjustments to the text changes in this, uh, text amendment that, uh, that do allow open air uses of land to have banners, ground signs, and sidewalk signs. Now, we've not broadened the range of places where you can have a banner, but we have made, uh, we've clarified that open air uses can have that kind of signage as is necessary so that they can do advertising, um, and continue to, to, uh, offer some, some commerce and beneficial impact to the city. So there's a handful of other less significant changes, um, and primarily at increasing precision uh, and predictability in the standards. Uh, and then finally, we have the ever-present need to comply with some changes in state law, particularly the decriminalization of zoning-related violations, um, and limitations that the General Assembly has adopted that bar local governments from requiring basically restriction of the manufactured homes when they're located in a manufactured home park. So the, the state is operating in a similar manner as we are, trying to facilitate these kinds of housing options for, for communities across the state. We discussed this, uh, this round of text amendments with the P and Z on the twenty second of November. Uh, received unanimous recommendation for approval. And we reviewed the changes with council during their work session on December sixth of last year. Tonight, I'm before you to answer questions and provide assistance, um, with the required public hearing if that is your wish. Answer any questions you may have.
I, um, um, some further clarification on this, the use. I don't, I don't, I don't understand it much. Could you try and white?
Yes, ma'am.
The, um. Okay, go ahead and see what you can do. I don't have conditional something, but.
Okay.
I don't understand this. It seems like we're caving on things or, um.
So, so let me try to explain what, what the issue is and, um, and how this is hopefully what I'm going to solve that problem to us. So Burlington has, as you well know, a tradition of conditional zoning. Uh, it's a, it's a process that's allowed under the statutes and it allows applicants to propose conditional changes or propose conditions as part of their application that deviate from the standards in U D O. Okay, and that's very typical. That's in use in what I can use. Burlington's system of conditional zoning is a little bit different than how most local governments and state do the conditional zoning process. Not that you're not along the law, you absolutely are. It's just that your process is a little bit different. We have some conditional zoning districts that are established in this process. You may recall when we were drafting the U D O, we felt it was necessary to apply some limitations on the kinds of things that could be deviated from the conditional zoning process, things like design standards, flood provisions, repair and water protection, et cetera. Handful of things that we didn't want to see vary through the conditional zoning process. There was concern that we were closing off necessary flexibility and so we created the plan development process to address those applicants who needed a maximum range of flexibility. So let's fast forward two and a half years. Now we have a situation where an applicant has one of two choices when it comes to conditional zoning here in Burlington. Option one is to go to a conditional zoning district, of which you have five. Or option two, you have a planned development district. The planned development district requires a master plan, engineering, significant amount of investment upfront to get an approval. The conditional zoning districts, on the other hand, are limited in the range of a lot of uses that can be established. And what we heard from applicants was, hey, I don't need such, I don't need the turbocharged plan development process and the conditional zoning districts that you guys have aren't sufficient in terms of meeting the need that I want to establish. All I really want to do is reason this piece of property to say perhaps a, uh, commercial zoning district designation to accommodate this one kind of use that I'd like to have there. Um, the U D O doesn't really allow that kind of an application today based on the, the legacy of conditional zoning here in Burlington. And so what we've done is created the limited use zoning option where someone can come in and as part of their conditional rezoning request, simply prohibit a range of. simply prohibit a range of otherwise allowable uses that might be permitted in that zoning district. It's still a conditional zoning. It's still a condition that's provided by the applicant that needs to be addressed and approved and accepted by the city. But it doesn't have anything to do with the typical kinds of deviations that we've seen in the past as part of conditional zoning, changes to development standards, reductions to dimensional requirements, et cetera. It's a much lighter touch. It's simply allowing a smaller range of use types in a proposed district. It doesn't require an applicant to prepare a site plan. It doesn't require a lot of engineering studies. It simply allows the applicant to say, I'd like to have this zoning district, and I don't want to do all of the uses that are allowed there. I only want to do this one use. So I'm going to prohibit every one of those use types that are otherwise allowed except the one that I want to do. And that's my limited use application. Does that make any sense?
Yes.
No, now that given us a, this drill down more basis, give us an example.
An example, let's say, you know, your property is a, like, and you want to do this use. It's not allowed on that. So instead of going through the process of putting together a concept plan, paying engineers, do all that, you're willing to meet whatever standards that the UDO has for that particular use. So what you would do is, instead of doing a conditional, you would come in and you're quite so limited use zoning for that use, and it would be limited use business. And what you can say is, I don't want all forty or fifty whatever uses. I just want to do a restaurant. And that would be the one use that you would be allowed to do. And it's just really going to be simple, honestly, the council do. You're not going to have to worry about, neither will the neighbor notice that we're impacting about all the other uses that would be considered. And it's just looking at the one district. And so the impact to that area is restricted to those. I don't know if that helps or not, but we saw it.
Chad, in the past, I think the term I remember that the perception when we were discussing our conditional use platform was that most municipalities used conditional use to put more restrictions on developers. We actually were using it to lessen restrictions so that we could seek more development. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And then in creating the UDO, we cleaned a lot of that up, but still created the conditional rezoning caveat or a PDD, which we had three, we had two.
We had a PDD.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had at least three.
Yeah, which have been phenomenal, I think. The three that we've done have been home runs. So this further, this would sort of soften that piece for staff to be able to facilitate, but still maintain the standards.
It's not just staff. So a lot of times, what applicants find when they come forward with a conventional rezoning application, general use rezoning application is this. The city, in a general use context, has to accept or allow the full range of allowable uses that might be permitted in that district. Right? And let's say I'm a neighbor, and somebody has a piece of L I zoning, and they want to do a car wash, and that's all they want to do. But the limited industrial district allows asphalt plants and large warehouses and nuclear reactors. I mean, that's a absurd example, but you get what I mean. I, as a neighbor, I don't want the nuclear reactor and all of that other stuff. I think I'm okay with just a car wash. But the city's kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place. If it's a general or a conventional rezoning, we have to consider the full range of allowable uses. So we can't make that neighbor feel better about the car wash that's proposed. This system allows that applicant who wants to do the car wash in L I to simply come forward and rezonate to L I, limited use, have their car washed, and the neighbor's concerns are addressed. And that's really what this is designed to do.
So they can still come to council?
Oh, absolutely.
It's still a resumption, there's a public hearing.
Absolutely.
It's still a resumption. Let me ask you this. This sounds pretty good. How do we educate our citizens that if this does pass, that this is an option so they don't get so overwhelmed or maybe begin with a decision. This is complicated material. How do we?
That's why a pre-application conference, if somebody has an interest in doing some type of use on their property, we always require a pre-application conference, and we give the option to them. You've got the guy that wants simple decisions.
That stays productivity and still changes.
I think for the most part, Harold, when people come in, at least in my experience, the average person at least seven years, they've got some notion of what they're going to use that property. And so then when they come in for that limited conference and say, listen, you know, you can do that. And, you know, this may be a little easier route for you to go than go that we have to sort of key it up and consider for the eighty-eight other uses here. But you've got a lot more to do, you've got a lot to face opposition. This is really, this is really good.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think it's a wonderful solution, resolution to what was could be perceived as really, really tight. Give us a caveat that you're what people are trying to do and make decisions from this board, which I think is important.
Or what is worse, this is how most places do conditional zoning, just like this. So we welcome you to the fold of local governments across the state who use conditional zoning this way.
Was all related to the show. Okay, any more questions, Chad? This time we'll open a public hearing for item four. And Madam Clerk, can we receive any of the written public comments regarding this subject matter in period between publication of the required notice and twenty-four hour period prior to this meeting pursuant to North London Statute 166A-19124E?
No comment.
Thank you. Are there any public comments for?
Mayor, we have no public request for comment.
Okay, no public comments. Is there a motion for a public hearing? Have a motion by council member Ward, second by councilor Law, in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? This time we request a motion for a question.
I make a motion to approve the request to amend the city of Burlington unified development ordinance with proposed changes. The motion is based upon consistency of the proposed rezoning comprehensive plan in that section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan, calls for updating the unified development ordinance. Section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan, calls for ensuring sound and land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that section four, land use goal two, recommendation four of comprehensive plan addresses confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code to a new unified development ordinance. Section four, land use goal two, recommendation four of comprehensive plan. A new UDO will be modern, rapidly intensive, and user-friendly for public consumption and administrative respect.
Thank you. We have a motion from councilmember Hikes, is her second.
Second.
Second, councilmember Law, in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion here. Thank you, thank you, Chad. Appreciate you bringing us some of the new era. Okay, while in the new business, the city council will consider approving the following requests for the Saturday, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, V-Town Events Sixth Annual St. Patty's Day Bash. They will temporarily close the following streets from two P M. until eleven P M. Front Street from Spring Street to York Street. Main Street from Davis Street to Front Street. And B, to approve the extension of alcohol permissions for beer gardens that will be in P. N.
Just my own table, Brown, from the Recreation Department as well. This is a big fan of yours.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and City Council. Thank you for having me on the call this evening. I'm here to request the downtown street closures and extension of the historic depots regulations for the Beer Garden at our annual St. Patty's Day Bash. You all should have a map with all the additional information regarding the event. It's the same layout, same permissions that we got approval for for City Council for our canceled twenty-twenty event. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, are there any questions from council? If not, is there a motion concerning that, the resolution?
I'm hoping that we adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt resolution, is her second. Second, councilmember Ward, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Yeah, thank you, we appreciate you being with us. Hey, let me say one thing, after this, you have things to approve. In the years, people who want to do, have dreams of doing development, I think are overwhelmed by the logic of what level of development they face. No, how do we take what we just passed here? If that particular area will be, you know, whatever. Is there a process where we can really reach out to citizens and developers that say, you know, we're here to listen to you. You come in, you talk to us, and we will try to talk you through the process to see what potentially may occur in the board instead of this, sometimes this negative response, right, saying that, you know, that I'm approved, that this is not going to apply. And some things in Burlington may not. But, you know, is it, is it tractable within that organization to have a go-to person where that contact can be made, where they can go in and speak to, to try to determine what options they may have as they begin in their early stages of formulating a potential project or something to that nature?
Yeah, I mean, anybody can call and come in and speak with staff. Danny Lawson normally handles that first level of contacts. He has a lot of knowledge of UDO and City Council guidebooks. Normally, that conversation leads to a pre-application conference. And those pre-application conferences have been extremely valuable. A lot of comments from us after those meetings and say, hey, this would be great. I'm going to get a lot of my flesh to answer right here in one second because we'll have about six different staff members there representing a lot of this. Try to think of the small, small, efficient. So that's our main, my current vision. And I will tell you, and this is a reminder, you know, we just finished a smart go basics session on the development side. In two weeks, we're going to be doing a smart go basics session on the inspection side. Following that, I'm going to go through, towards the end of the month, a series of UDO workshops where we basically go over some of the basics with the UDO, talk about some of the primary areas that people are in the term. And then we're open up for feedback of those workshops. We want to hear from the development community. We want to use that input to guide our next round of UDOs and experiences council. It's great. So that's kind of where we're going.
I think the workshops, which we've recently started that process, seems to be a definite step in the right direction. To Harold's point, there's a lot of, first of all, the UDO itself and then using smart go are two pretty significant changes in how we've always done things. And then when you add staff changes, where there's a familiarity that's a void there now, that's created a little bit of that, that big, you know, item that is hard to get your brain around a little bit. No, and do we ever, do we ever lack a tend to home builders or anything like that and just have a cuban action or?
I'm the guy that's Trevor Russell. I know he's involved with the general contractors. So he's connected with that side of the house, talking about his benefits.
It would probably be good to reach out and see if we could attend one of their meetings and just share some of this. Maybe somebody from this board attend as well just to show the appreciation for what they do in our community because it's, to Harold's point, it's kind of tough to get into it and understand it until you get to the point that they have a project and then you guys can take over with the review. But maybe there's projects out there that we're just not seeing because the fear is that I don't want to go through all these. So that's exactly what I'm trying to, and we've heard some of that. Yeah, very much. And it's not that we encourage the staff, it's just the process is complex. It's feelings.
Yeah, and if council runs across the situation on that, we'll start talking. I'll be glad to start that process and work with and get a good, you know, good understanding of what they're trying to accomplish. We can't always, you know, work things sometimes with parts of the zone, just like it's all.
So I applaud y'all's effort going forward. This is, this is, I think, a good item to show. Okay, at this, our next item is our public comment period. It's time. I'll call on public comments for topics that are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone in attendance would like to speak their public comments, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom or if a public press star man to notify the those that you wish to speak. We do ask that everyone, please state your name, address, and topic for the record. And I think in addition, Madam Clerk, if you had any comments, public comments, emails to be read?
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, while we're waiting on the Zoom platform, I do know that we have someone from the floor. We've got John Brooks, welcome. Mr. Brooks, if you want to come up.
Okay.
And we do have your address to the record.
Thank you. How much time do I give, Mr. Mayor?
I will defer to our city attorney for thirty.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Take our five.
Okay. It's good to see all of you, and I want to congratulate the guys that are coming back on the council. We had a hard fought campaign, a good campaign, in my opinion. I know everybody here, I've been around for a while. In fact, I've been earlier than that for forty-two years. I'm one of the few people that immigrated from south here to north. I grew up there, that's true. First, I guess I'll say to Jim Butler, I believe it was during the campaign twenty-fifteen. Did you run for mayor in twenty-fifteen, Jim?
I did.
I was working for him at various places around town. You don't hear me? And I went to Paradise School, and there I met Jim's son and maybe one of his daughters. And that son was impressive and was so disappointed that I was supporting someone else, that I left. I said, look, I'm not going to stand here and try to compete with you because he was upset I was not supporting his dad. But anyway, Jim, congratulations, you know. And I also own the business, my contract is called Beer Sales Fly. There's dealer sales finance, sort of, yeah. There's beer sales finance sort of, and our biggest customer was Coxville. That's when Jim was working at Cox, and I would occasionally see him and say hello there. I do actually have a couple of real issues. Can someone tell me who's responsible for painting the lines on the street? On Meven Street, specifically between Ireland and say Avon or Anfield School, the Christian school? Is that the state or is that the city?
It's the state, that's definitely the state, sir.
Okay. Almanz Ice Center gives me A plus for my distance picture. And my night vision is very good. And not this storm we had the other day, but the one before, we had quite good rain. At night, I was on Meven, I had been down here someplace. And I got on Meven coming off of Web Avenue. It is very, very difficult in rain with water on that street to see those lines. So that's just one issue I don't want to bring up. I recently returned from about a week in Stockholm Street. I've been there several times before on business and pleasure. And this was my first four A in the wintertime. The sun would come up at about nine thirty, and then it would set about three thirty. And it was kind of arguable in the way. But that is the most walkable city that I've ever experienced. And I'd like to come back sometime and talk with anybody that has an interest in that area. I don't know, I have no clue, I've been sort of, maybe not paying attention. I don't know where we are in terms of trying to become a more walkable city. Kind of related to that, and I wasn't even going to, I didn't even write this down. I don't really know what our noise ordinance is. But I think everywhere in the United States. And I was recently in Athens, Georgia, which is a big university town. Again, one that Jim Butler can deal with. They have a hell of a problem. You've got fifty thousand students. Forty thousand of which have an F-150 or a Chevy or a big car, and the noise is horrible. I live over the twenty-seventh and south of Almanz Road. Right across the street from the, oh, and I should have said, who I am, John Brooks. Eighty-six oh eight St. Sperry Drive, which is a fairly new street, fourteen years old. But I was across the street from the tag office. A lot of traffic there, a lot of traffic, but I hear zooming from Meven to Church Street. And for quality of life, you know, I don't know how you enforce noise ordinances. I know it would be very difficult. And we've got a lot of other issues that are going to be difficult, such as the homeless problem. But that problem is, is, and I know I'm an old guy, but it seems to me it's gotten a lot worse in the last five years. So, and then I, kind of an old issue with me is a greenway from downtown Glencoe. I had a chance while I was watching you guys on the conference do this little sketch. And there's still time, and there's still probably some open land where we could do that. You scoot out to Glencoe. The Hog River Trail down that road is part of Mount Sea Trail. There's going to be more traffic. If you put a greenway, that's going to increase the traffic. You know, what does it do? You could say, well, it really doesn't do anything. But it could get people off the train, put the greenway, play the hydra, do something out there, come back downtown. Hang out for, just kind of one of those little George Bush vision things that I have. And then, coming back to Ronnie, if I may for a minute. Ronnie, I've got this hat, which is well worn, and come Monday night, I'll be saying the same thing you are. To help with your order. I say that all the time. So good luck Monday night. I really enjoy watching Almanz play football. Ronnie, I hope the rest of you understand the dedication and devotion of the people of this city to Ronnie Wall. And Ronnie may not ever run for office again, or he might. But if he does, he will get elected, I guarantee you that. Because I worked another location down at of the church that where Agent Wood comes in, South Church Street. Hell, man. And that morning, that was in twenty, I guess that was in twenty thirteen, that was probably, yeah. I got so cold after being there for an hour, I went across the street to the Messick, Messick, and Messick Law Firm and asked them to let me come in and warm up for a while. But I had just helped a lady get out of the backseat of the car, and I don't know how I was with it, she said my name was Wales. And I tried to hand her an Ian Maltoobis card. And she said, don't hand me that, don't even try to hand me that. I'll vote for Ronnie Wall forever. And that was true of the older ladies, the younger ladies that interfered with Ronnie. That speaks, I think, to your dedication to the school system as well as this community overall. That's, that's a real compliment. Anyway, I think I probably queued up a ton here today.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you, John, we appreciate you being here and bringing those items up. Just, just for clarification, Norman, pardon, we've got, we've got a plan with our greenway bike lanes. Are those posted on the website?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I've posted the budget plan that we work each year.
Okay, so, so John, if you have an interest, we've got our, we've got our plan for bike, bikeways, railways, and pedestrian, our pedestrians, and they're all on the website posted for what our future plans are.
I need to look at that.
So, yeah, with love for you and maybe provide some.
I want to say one thing about Kathy, may I do that?
You can. Anybody's welcome to say.
Kathy and her husband Bob Hykes, as we all know, are the most reasons that downtown is probably the way. And we enjoy mutual friendships with Paul Ziegler, I mean, you have to do Paul Ziegler. Paul Ziegler was a very good friend of mine, and he's a better friend than theirs. Kathy, I just want to say thank you in your service. I actually attended a furniture house from time where Paul Ziegler's exotic, creative woodwork was displayed. It was one of the most amazing things that I ever saw, and I appreciate y'all doing that and everything that you and Bob had done.
Very special. Thank you, John. Yeah, and that's an interesting point that was, that's what happens to. That's always an issue. Do we have any other public comments, Scott, are there any via the Zoom platform?
No, sir, no additional question or comment.
Okay, this time we'll move to council comments. You know, I've got, I've got a couple of real brief comments from council perspective. One is just a quick thanks to city staff, certainly our first responders, telecommunicators that specifically had to work during the holidays. So we, we always, we certainly care about all of our city staff, but there are some that just don't get holidays off. And that's always a big deal, especially this time of year. So thanks to our city staff and first responders, telecommunicators, those on the public works side of water, sewer. It's just a, a big undertaking to have to be away from your family during holidays. And we want to tell everybody how much we appreciate that. And then the second item, we talked about it briefly yesterday evening at the work session. Mayor Pro Tim Owen, City Manager, Martin Watkins, and myself on call with some intergovernmental call about COVID-nineteen, the Omicron variant that's out there now. Harold talked about it a little bit when we had our presentation tonight. But just for a public perspective, we are in a very critical window. Our healthcare system's in a very critical window of time. Where yesterday at three o'clock, there were only six ICU beds available for COVID-nineteen patients, and all of them dealt, I think. From memory a little bit. And if you look at the positivity rate that we've always measured COVID by, certainly a fourteen day rolling rate of positivity. Pre-Christmas, it was below five percent. Our one day positivity rate this weekend exceeded thirty percent. And our fourteen day rolling positivity rate is now more than eighteen percent. So we are in a critical stage for our healthcare system. We do believe, based on feedback, that somewhere between the ninth of January, the fourteenth of January, we should see a peak in the surge. But the stress on our healthcare system is pretty enormous right now. And the transmission rate of Omicron is far greater than anything we've, we've experienced. So not only does it tax our healthcare system, just the positivity rate, it can tax our city staff, our first responders. We've got numerous staff out, and I'm sure everybody in the private sector is experiencing it in their employment as well, which puts a lot of pressure and a lot of responsibility on those that are trying to pick up the load. So, you know, vaccines are important, the boosters are certainly important. I'm a huge advocate of personal choice, but for those that are on the fence, do your homework. And let's look into that and see if that would be something that you would be willing to help out with. I don't know if any other council members have a comment on that, but certainly our council comments, anything else, anybody has?
I thought we phoned you yesterday that York County together. I think it's yesterday. It was quickly done, quickly done, it was very well done. The chairs and county commissioners chaired the event, but they made invitations to all the local municipalities in the county. They had health department staff there speaking, they had the president of health there speaking. And Paul didn't use what a break, as you were, but it was, it was an honest attempt to let everybody know that this is, this is serious. And we, you know, I think we all had, yeah, I hope so, that there's hope for health, of life, couple of ones, you know, this is the time, man. Jim, you were, and Martin, you were involved too. I thought that was an excellent job.
It did, agree.
I mean, it was no politics back and forth about who doing what. It was just simply trying to say, okay, this is where we are, this is what is coming. And actually, if I'm not mistaken, one of the, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, guys, actually one of the hospitals stopped, just had begun to stop hating.
E R.
E R.
What's, what's it called?
Bushville. That's, that's just how, where they are. It was very well done.
We need more people to step up and be vaccinated. It's very important, and I understand some people have reasons that they don't, but some people have just put it off. It's important, right, especially right now.
I think, Martin, is there a plan for us to maybe do some public service announcements and get something out there more different? You guys working on that for us?
Yes, sir, and there was some good discussion after the beat. There was a representative amongst the Guilford mayor, in fact, was President Austin. And I felt that was a high point, he put together some communication points. Sort of relative to everyone, trying to make some suggestions. I think we're going to borrow from some of those and the other message we had, and work with Morgan and her team. We'll push councils, push out some of those messages in all our various departments.
I think certainly I'm asking for them, and I think everybody else should agree. Any other council comments?
I do have, I would like to revisit something from last night, when we were talking about the Warren property. I woke up at four A M thinking about the building being razed tomorrow. I just would like to say that I would prefer that being deferred until it looks like we have the plan of what's going to happen next. Because it doesn't seem like it's going to have a hold in the ground for a long period of time. There may be reasons to do that immediately, but I'm just thinking about what that is going to look like for the next two years.
Well, if I'm, if I'm, if we can revisit that briefly, so staff very clear what we're asking you to do. I believe that the timeline that Nolan put out for the demolition piece and then getting clearscapes involved, one was going to kind of overlap with the other so that it was not going to be a significant dead period. Is that right, Nolan?
Yeah, I think what you ended up with is clearscapes doing their schematic, their concept work at the same time that you did the demolition process. At the end of that, the council decided that we're ready to move forward. You have nine months to twelve months of design. And these structures, so, you know, while they're doing this schematic and demolition work, in, when that's done, you end up with a grass area, with holding ground, certain of them do that. Because we got a backfill, and we can stabilize and establish turf, and think the walls want to look as good as could for that nine, twelve month period. But the council decided they want us to try to incorporate that in the construction project.
And I think from that standpoint, at least green space would look better than the potential of roof collapse.
Yeah, and there are some advantages to doing it now. You've mitigated remediated soil issue, you know what you're doing with it. So whoever's designed the building knows how to design it. Because right now, we don't have the soil stuff. So there's a method to do it, but it can be done anyways.
Thank you. I guess you were.
And I agree. And Nolan, if, if something's going to change or it's going to look like we've got something that we hadn't anticipated under the schedule, we're supposed to be bringing back and discussing it. As you get into it.
It's going to look like, right, where it's crossing that.
Yeah, that's why we're this second, because it looks like it's going to be a square. It'll be a boundary of warmth.
We can grow grass, Dan.
Just checking, just checking.
Valid question.
Yeah, but it looks like that, spending around the field.
It's a valid question, thank you for bringing that up. I do know that we've had a request to, when we closed session, to discuss evaluations of City Manager and City Attorney. I think, for Harold, you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the City Council is going to close session for some reason. N C G S, one more three days, three one eight eleven. Eight six for the purpose of discussion personnel matter, and any evaluation to the City Attorney and the City Manager, which are the other damage.
So, the motion and the second, all in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed?